Harding. Not here. Hug. Johnson.
Here.
Melton.
Here.
Rowe. Mr. President.
Here. Please rise for the pledge and I'll provide the opening remarks. So today we'll recognize Black Maternal Health Month, which is the month of October, as the county did last week. We'll have Ms. Johnson read that proclamation here in a minute. But I also wanted to acknowledge that already started in the last month is National Hispanic Heritage Month. So I wanted to recognize that and also recognize an event I was at over the weekend by the Metro Young Latino Professionals Association. Really impressive events at the Livestock Exchange Building, well attended. What was especially notable about it was they gave a bunch of scholarships that day and a bunch of awards. And the two Public Servants of the Year were two people that I work with. So I wanted to recognize Celine Espinoza, who works at CHI Health. But then I also recognized Yacenia Valenzuela, who works for the City of Omaha, who also received Public Servant of the Year. So feel honored to work with them and I appreciate it seeing them getting that award that day. Thank you.
An affidavit of publication is on file for the pre-council and city council meeting, and a current copy of the Open Meeting Act is posted in a white binder on the east wall of the legislative chambers.
Good afternoon. Welcome to the Omaha City Council. We appreciate having you here today. We look forward to hearing from you on our many items. I'll encourage you to turn your cell phones to vibrate or even off, which is better. And at this time, we'll recognize Ms. Johnson to read the proclamation on behalf of Black Maternal Health Month.
Thank you, Mr. President. Do we have Taylor in the room? All right, I don't see her coming forward, so I'm going to go ahead and start. Whereas to improve black maternal health, we need a comprehensive approach that addresses health care, health, across the lifespan. Health improves, health across the lifespan, improves access to quality care, provides greater economic security to women. And whereas black women living in areas of high poverty have an increased likelihood of inadequate prenatal care. And whereas black infants have a higher rate of death during birth. And whereas we can raise awareness of the state of black maternal health by recognizing the need for urgent solutions, amplifying the voices and experiences of black women, families, and communities. And committing to building, and committing to build a world in which black women are assured of their dignity and well-being during and after pregnancy. Now therefore, we, the City Council of the City of Omaha, do hereby proclaim the month of October 2023 as Black Maternal Health Month. And whereas, in witness where we have set our hands and caused the seal, the official seal of the City of Omaha to be affixed on this third day of October 2023. I believe we did have maybe Taylor walk in the room if you would come up to the podium.
Of course. Good afternoon, everyone. Sorry about my tardiness. It is very wet outside. Can I say a few words?
If you would.
I'd love to. First, I'd like to thank Councilwoman Festerson and Councilwoman Johnson for taking the time for advocating for health equity in our great city of Omaha, Nebraska. My name is Taylor Given-Stun and I'm the Policy and Advocacy Manager at Ivy Black Girl here in Nebraska. And we are a collective of black women and femmes who center our reproductive well-being here in this great state. So we do that through a variety of measures, including our birth equity work, our advocacy and policy work, as well as community engagement and community outreach. And we know that black women in Nebraska, black women across the country, have some of the most dire maternal health outcomes. We have higher rates of infant mortality. We have higher rates of mothers dying in childbirth during labor. And by taking this time to center black women's maternal health in the month of October, we're really shining a light on the importance of doing something about this work. The importance of all of our city leaders, all of our professionals, all of our students, our caretakers, our mamas, our doulas, coming together to make sure that we're doing something about this super important issue. We know that when you create solutions for people that have the most disproportionate outcomes, everyone benefits in those systems. So by really taking the time to center black women this month, we're doing so to create better well-being for all women and birthing folks across this great state. By focusing and raising awareness to black maternal health in the city, we hope to change maternal and child health outcomes overall. So again, thank you so much for your time to approve this proclamation or to consider this proclamation. We're internally grateful. I'd also like to do a small plug. Ivy Black Girl is having maternal health, black maternal health events for the entire month of October. Those are community events. Those are health center events. We're hosting a community baby shower. We're doing lots and lots of things to really raise the importance of this issue. So thank you again so much. We're so happy to be considered. And I urge you all, everybody in this room, whether you're a council member or whether you're a community member, to really think about how you're sending black birthing folks this month. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Before you step away, Louise, could you help me out with taking a picture, please? Councilmember Festerson, if you don't mind.
Is there a best place to stand?
Madam Clerk.
Item six, to consider a Class C liquor license for Alfredo's Bar located at 2910 K Street, Suite D.
The public hearing and vote on number six is today. Proponents, please.
Good afternoon. Dave Koke, K O U K O L, on council for Albert Redikus. Mr. Redikus is with me. He's the sole owner of the applicant, Alfredo's Bar LLC.
All right. Would you like to introduce yourself as well?
Mr. Redikus, just give him your name and...
Al Redikus. I live at 5075 Levinworth Street.
All right, thank you. Any other proponents here today? Seeing none. Any opponents?
Pardon?
He was just asking for opponents. We're good.
Public hearing is closed.
Make a motion to approve.
There's a motion to approve and a second. Roll call.
Begley. Harding. Hug. Johnson. Melton. Rowe. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item six is approved, seven to zero.
Thanks.
Thank you very much. Take care.
Thank you.
Item seven, to consider a Class C liquor license for Heirloom Fine Foods located at 1229 Millwork Avenue, Suite 1210. A is communication from the Planning Department regarding permits.
Public hearing and vote on number seven is today. I believe we have the applicants by Zoom. Mr. Rosa will get you off mute here in a minute. Okay, try that.
Hello, everybody.
Hello.
Want to give your name and address for the record? Can you hear us?
I'm not able to hear anybody.
We'll see if we can get that working. We need your name and address for the record to get started. We can hear you for sure. Want to try your volume or something?
Can everybody hear me just fine?
Yes.
Thumbs up?
Turn your volume up, maybe? If you click the speaker button.
Is that any better?
Hello?
Yes, can you hear us? Okay. I'm going to ask in the meantime if there's any other proponents that want to speak today. And if not, any opponents? I'm not going to close public hearing because I'm sure we want to speak with Mr. Rosa here if we can. Ms. Melton, your lights on if you want to try it?
It doesn't seem to be any problems on my end. Everything is unmuted.
Okay.
Not too sure I should proceed with this, but I did do this before. I am opening a place in Millwork Commons downtown on the old market, near the old market. Basically, my concept is a marketing cafe similar to other cities where you have like a marketing cafe in the area. My liquor license would be mainly beer and wine. I wouldn't be selling any liquor whatsoever. I'll be having a charcuterie station that'll be offering some wine for purchase at the space and some beer to purchase. But outside of that, I have no other intentions to sell liquor outside of that space.
Okay. Thank you. I'm not sure if you can hear us now.
I really hope that helps you guys.
All right. It's a little unclear how to proceed here because I think we will have some questions for you. Mr. Harding, is your light on, Ms. Melton?
The problem was resolved.
Okay. Mr. Harding.
It's kind of hard for me to ask the questions if he can't hear, so I don't know how you want to proceed on this. I have, I'll state for the record at least that I have concerns. I know, apparently there's some payments that have not been made as it relates to the restaurant tax. And I know that those have gone to collection and now the collection agency has collected some of that or at least has received a check from what I'm told and that it has yet to clear. So I'd have a couple of questions of Mr. Rosa along those lines and would appreciate the opportunity to ask those. So I don't know how you want to proceed with that.
Yeah, seems maybe, given that, I think we do have time on this license, as I recall?
Yes, we do.
Yes, there's time. We have until October 26th.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to lay it over then.
There's a motion.
But I would also, we need to make sure Mr. Rosa understands that we laid this over as well as the reasons for it, too. Someone would...
Mr. President, I'm in the queue here.
Okay, well, I haven't finished speaking.
Yep, we'll recognize you here in a minute, Ms. Johnson. Before it's yours, Mr. Harding.
So I don't know whose responsibility it would be then to contact Mr. Rosa to make him aware of both the questions and the actions that we possibly could be taking here today. If someone could answer that for me, would that be the court's office?
The clerk's office will do that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So there was a motion, a second to lay over for one week. Ms. Johnson, you're recognized.
Mr. President, thank you.
Or two weeks, I'm sorry, because we don't meet next week. Go ahead, Ms. Johnson.
This question is for anyone that has the answer. My colleague has mentioned that there was a payment that this individual is...
Is there another way that I can answer any of your questions on this Zoom?
Councilmember Mr. Harding indicated that there is a payment, a tax payment that's due. I'd like for this body and I'd like for the City of Omaha to advise me why this particular liquor license, given the fact that it is in District Two, why I was not aware of this. And yet, Mr. Harding was. And if Mr. Harding was notified, were there any other members in city council that were notified? If someone could answer that.
I do think it was an email that went to all council members in the last few days.
Last week.
Last week.
Okay. And so again, Mr. Harding is taking the liberty to make a motion in my district, which I find, I take exception to and have stated on a number of occasions. And I also noticed the pattern that he has as he relates to taking liberty of making motions for things occurring in District Two. Whereas, he does not take that same liberty with other members of city council. And I ask that we be respectful of each other. And if he is able to give that type of respect to my other colleagues, I have, I feel some kind of way about him continuously taking exception to voting for things in my district when I have asked him on a number of occasion to not do that because I find it offensive. And I've already stated why I find it offensive, because he doesn't consistently do it to the other council members in their district.
At the moment, there is a motion and a second to lay over for two weeks, which I would support just given the fact that we can't interact with the applicant here with some technical problems. I don't see any further lights. I'll call a roll call on the two-week layover.
Begley. Harding. Hug. Johnson. Melton. Rowe. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item seven is approved, six to one. Item eight, to consider Class D liquor licenses for come-and-go locations as listed on the agenda.
Public hearing and vote on number eight is today. Proponents, please.
My name is Dalton Harris. The business address is 4443 South 84th Street, Omaha, Nebraska. I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none. Any opponents? Public hearing is closed. There's a motion and a second to approve. No further lights, roll call.
Begley. Harding. Hug. Johnson. Melton. Rowe. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item eight is approved, seven to zero. Items nine through 11 can be considered together for Trail Ridge Branches located northwest of 214th and Grover Streets. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Item nine, an ordinance to rezone this property from GI District to DR District. Item 10, a resolution to approve the final plat. Item 11, a resolution to approve the subdivision agreement.
Public hearing and vote on items nine through 11 are today. Proponents, please.
Okay, thank you, President Festerson, members of the Omaha City Council. My name's Jim Lying. I'm an attorney at 8526 F Street. I represent the applicant in regard to this matter. This final plat that you have before you today is the identical plat that the council approved back in May of 2023. We're asking for your approval today on these three items. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to address those. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none. Any opponents? Public hearing is closed. There's a motion and a second to approve. Roll call.
Begley. Harding. Hug. Johnson. Melton. Rowe. Mr. President.
Yes.
Items nine through 11 are approved, seven to zero.
Thank you, thanks.
Item 12, an ordinance to rezone property located at 3301 Harney Street from R7 District to TOD2 MX District. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing and vote on number 12 is today. Proponents, please.
Hi, I'm Brian Zimmer, 4610 Dodge Street, AO Architects, and I'm here as a proponent for the rezoning of this piece of property. I think it's a good use for taking a derelict property and turning it into a useful office space.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none. Any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Mr. Bakely, you're recognized.
Thanks, Mr. President. Brian, good afternoon. So by way of history, I know I had coffee with your partner who's in Florida right now. That was in Knights of Columbus Hall way back, way back in the day, right?
Yeah, that is correct, yeah.
And it was, then it was a frat house for UNO at one time, I think. Is that right?
I believe it was UNO. I'm not sure if it was UNO or Creighton.
Okay.
But originally, the building was a telephone exchange building designed by Thomas Kimball, a famous architect.
He did the Saint Cecilia's Cathedral, my own parish church.
Mine, mine as well.
Yeah. So I appreciate you coming down and I'll be glad to support this today with all the great things going on in Blackstone and nearby there. This is a nice, nice location for what you're doing here. So I'll be making a motion to support this today. Thanks for coming down.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. President.
There's a motion and a second. No further lights. Roll call.
Begley. Harding. Hug. Johnson. Melton. Rowe. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 12 is approved, seven to zero. Item 13, a resolution to approve the NOOK Apartments Tax Increment Financing Redevelopment Project Plan located at Eighth and Pine Streets in an amount up to $6,113,822.
Public hearing and vote on number 13 is today. Proponents, please.
Oh, yeah. Good afternoon. Don Seaton, Omaha City Planning Department. This project is located in the Dollman neighborhood. It's on scattered groups of parcels that are to the north, south, and east of Pine Elementary. And there's Pine Elementary, Dollman Neighborhood. About a dozen parcels. Most of them are vacant. There are two single-family homes that will be removed. One demolished, one maybe demolished, maybe relocated. To make room for a 250-market-rate residential multifamily project involves about 11 separate three-story buildings. Tried to design it to fit in with the context of the neighborhood. There'll be about 260 parking stalls with about 186 of them off-street, 78 parking stalls on-street. This is in an extremely blighted area. We are looking at a 20-year TIF term for this project. The developer is a subsidiary of Bluestone Development managed by Deborah and Christian Christensen. Total investment in the neighborhood is about 47, pardon me, $45.7 million. The TIF support is $6,113,882. Project meets the required criteria of the TIF program. It's an appropriate land use for the area and we ask for your support.
Thank you. Other proponents?
Good afternoon, Mr. President, members of the council, Larry Jovan, 11440 West Center Road, appearing on behalf of the applicant. With me today is Deborah and Christian Christensen of Bluestone Development. Also with me today is Joe Zadina of Lamparneers and the Consulting Engineers on this particular project and also Todd Moeller of Alley Pointer, the architects on this particular project. So I just wanted to hit a couple of highlights really and, you know, we can go into a deep dive if we'd like to. I would say that this is the redevelopment plan and we have all the information here. The actual preliminary plat, final plat, expansion of the NCE and approval of the conditional use permit large project approvals will come before this council at a later date. Those items actually go to Planning Board tomorrow afternoon. So, but, but everything that you have before you today for this redevelopment plan is consistent with everything that's in the applications for tomorrow before the Planning Board. I'll tell you that the Planning Department has recommended approval of various items that are before the Planning Board tomorrow. I just want to point out one thing about the TIF aspects and then I'll get into the actual zoning. But again, I don't want to get too deep into it because we're going to see this again, but I will give you a few highlights. I think Don said that the projected valuation is $25,664,000. I would just tell you right now, the current valuation of these properties is only $984,700. So there's a significant increase in the valuation in this particular area that will come with this particular redevelopment project. There's four permanent jobs. There's approximately 255 construction jobs that will be part of this redevelopment project. So that's from the TIF perspective. From the kind of land use zoning, it meets all of the requirements of the NCE overlay district in this particular area. And I have a zoning map. And this, this essentially shows in black highlighted the areas that are part of this redevelopment plan, eventually the redevelopment project. You'll notice that all of the area around here is zoned R7. So the R7-based district zoning is really everything surrounded in this area. And a big part of the area is also part of this NCE overlay district, which is being expanded as part of this particular development. And so I think there's been a number of neighborhood meetings, both small group meetings and then we had a full-blown meeting, I think June 19th of 2023. I know that the Dollman Homeowners Association has reached out to all the various members with respect to each one of those neighborhood meetings and as far as the project in general. So there's been plenty of notification about what is going on here. I would tell you that, that this project is consistent with the NCE overlay district, that there's no waivers being requested by this particular project, meaning that all the site regulators are being complied with and met. It's consistent with the master plan and will be consistent with the zoning. One of the things that it may come up today is the on-street parking elements of this proposed project. This is actually the approved South 10th Street Neighborhood Conservation Enhancement District Plan. And I'd just point out to you, and this was actually approved by the city council. I mean, it just says right here in black and white and with my highlights, it's intended that on-street parking be fully utilized within the district, meaning that on-street parking is something that is actually encouraged and not discouraged. So that is right in the plan itself. And also, as part of that plan, it talks about parking for multifamily residential shall be one stall per dwelling unit for efficiency in one-bedroom units and a minimum of one stall per dwelling unit and a maximum of two stalls per dwelling. So the required parking, I believe, is 250 parking stalls, both on-street and off-street. The project is providing 264 stalls, so we exceed the minimum parking requirements of the NCE overlay district. Again, you're going to see all this again when, after Planning Board and when it comes to city council. So you'll see everything here again, so I don't want to take too much of your time. I just want to explain some of those things. Also, there was a traffic study that was done in connection with the Pine Elementary School and it was a collaborative traffic study. And one of that traffic study also showed is that there's no additional public improvements that are required with this particular project. So all the traffic improvements are adequate to serve what's being proposed here. I would also just point out that the density that is currently allowed in this R7 zoning with the NCC overlay district on a portion of it would be about 361 units. There's only 250 units being called for with this particular development. So again, everything being consistent with the master plan, everything being consistent with the, and the overlay district, meeting all the requirements, no waivers, no adjustments. We think this is a great project and a great addition to this particular neighborhood. The urban design code will apply as well. So, you know, I think Don showed you the architecture. I've got some more elevations if you'd like. This is just another view of what they're calling the Pine Street Road Houses. Then what Don showed you is the apartment buildings and what this is is really a mix of housing types. A lot very similar to The Boss over there on Saddle Creek in Pacific, you know, as far as the roadhouse look. I would point out that there's a number of amenities. There's actually seven pocket parks that will be located throughout this proposed development. And they're in these locations here that shows the various pocket parks and that's what they will look like. And I think I've answered kind of the highlights of the zoning and the TIF. I think Don covered the rest. We think this is a great project for this area. project for this area, and we ask for your support and approval.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Other proponents that want to speak today?
Good afternoon, Councilmen of Omaha, Nebraska, the Greater Omaha, Nebraska, South, or City, excuse me, the City of Omaha. Nothing against all this great development Larry and them folks are doing. Donnie R. Johnson, the Johnson and Question Foundation, and Northham Hall Concerned Citizen Foundation. I have two concerns, sir. All this new development in that Ninth Street and all that new traffic got to go up Dodge Street, who's going to fix that tunnel? And would there be any money left for Northham Hall after all this work is done and the tunnel?
This is about the product at Eighth and Pine, so you have.
Yeah, but who's going to handle all that new traffic we got going up Dodge when they just had to turn it out?
I think you're talking about last week, Donnie. So to keep it to number, number 13 here, or else you're out of order.
Okay. I defer my time to the United States Senator.
Okay, thank you. Any other opponents today?
I'm Robert Mabe. I live at 1402 Park Wild Avenue. I was told that there's going to be 250 apartments. There's going to be 188 off-street parking. They don't always account for the, most of these one- and two-bedroom apartments are going to be surrounded. Most of these apartments are going to be surrounded with, or not surrounded, I'm sorry, I'm nervous. There's going to be probably two people living in each apartment, so there's going to be two cars. And they're counting for one person in each apartment. So that could be up to 500 cars. There's only 188 off-street parking. That's what we were, that's the numbers we were given. Also, this is surrounding a grade school. There's going to be very few kids living in these buildings. I don't understand why they would want to build a one- and two-bedroom apartment buildings surrounding a grade school. Also, around the grade school, there's no on-street parking. So where are these cars going to go if they're not going to be able to park in front of their apartment buildings on the street? They're going to have to go off into the neighborhoods, you know, blocks away. And where I live is on a steep hill in a blind driveway. And if there's a lot of cars parked there, I'm not going to be able to see what's coming down the driveway. We've got a, the neighbor's garage is built right up to the street. On the other side of my driveway is a light pole. And so in the winter, when it's so slippery, because it gets very icy, if I have to abort getting into my driveway, which I often do, I'm going to slam into somebody's car. So parking on that street isn't safe. It's going to be expensive for, for whoever's cars are going to be hit. And we get, we do get sand from the city because it's very slippery. And I don't know if you guys have considered the parking situation. It's not the same as parking on flat land. There's cars that already slide into each other on that street. I don't know if there's been any winter studies, but that's all I've got to say.
Okay, thank you. We can ask some more questions here in a minute. Any other opponents that want to speak today?
Louis T. Menace, 2709 Dewey Avenue. I want to talk about the, the but four for the TIF. I don't believe that this project or the vast majority of projects that come forward here, that there's a but four. I think you guys want to encourage development, so you vote for the, the TIF, even though the but four is probably not a driving force. For example, this project asks for $6 million for public improvements. And six millions could be six miles of standard streets in Omaha. But on the project here, and tell You have, this is the eligible TIF expenses, which are mostly public improvements. Or I always thought they were public improvements. Right off the bat, you have site acquisition. So this project is going to get three millions to acquire the site if the developer doesn't have money to buy the site. Is there really, is there really room to develop it? You could say this is the, this is the but four. But I don't believe in this project that's the case. It is, it's vacant lots. There's no, there's no improvements on it, on the, the sites. They're mostly vacant lot. So what is going on here is that we want to see development in this district, in this area. And this is a way for the developer to assess their cost. So there's no, there's no but four. It's, it's a money grab for the project. It's a win-win for everybody. The district gets developed. I've been in the area, and I, I agree that this would be a beneficial addition for it, but I don't think that you really need $6 million of public funds to start and finish the, the project. So that's my opposition.
Okay, thank you. Any other opponents to number 13?
Larry Store, 5015 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, 68132. I drove around that area this morning. I really liked the Little Italy area, and this is not that far from, just a block or so away. I'm opposed to it because I don't think those buildings fit in with the neighborhood. Maybe those that are further south, but not right in that area close to Little Italy. So I'd like to see them maybe redesign the outside of it a little bit to fit in with that. And I want to say something here that's kind of a complaint. If Mr. Ramirez is a reporter, he should admit that to you. He sure acts like one. Thank you.
Any other opponents at number 13?
Good afternoon. Kim Kokowski, 1502 South 10th Street. I'm here to oppose this because we've had, a gentleman talked about the numerous community meetings they've had. There was one in May with about 10 of us there. Even people who were in favor of the development, we all kind of said parking. And that was, that was a very small meeting with about 10 of us. And then in June, there was another one between 80 and 100 people, and pretty much everybody said parking. And then when they came before the planning board in August, we all said parking. So I don't know where you go to, like, what the misery compromise on this is. Like, do we sit down with Bluestone and ask for some concerns to be addressed? So parking is not totally overwhelming to our neighborhood? Just out walking, let's see, how does this?
It'll come on.
Oh, it'll come on?
Yeah.
It's help, okay.
There you go.
So, okay, move it over. Okay, there's a no parking zone. This is on Forest Avenue, right at Ninth Street. So Forest Ave, there's two people already parked in no parking zones. This is on Ninth Street. There's a no parking, because there's not any parking in there. And this, where's the no parking? Yeah, the no parking is there, and then there's two more cars parked there. Then, also on Forest Street, the white Jeep right there is illegally parked. So those are just five there, and then often there are more right along William Street. I know one, utilizing on-street parking is a great idea. If there's on-street parking to be utilized, like, I got nothing against that. This is on Ninth Street, looking south. And there were three people who got in their cars right before I snapped this one. This is on William Street in the morning. I believe when I looked at the project notes on the website, it showed for them counting, I believe, all of these will be their own parking. And all the ones I just pointed to on Ninth Street, they would count those as their parking. On Pine Street, there's no parking on one side, and I think that they'll take that out and make that into their parking, which is fine. A concern that I have is that when Dahlman flats came in, we all said parking is going to be an issue and a big problem. And they said, yeah, yeah, it's going to be okay. And so they didn't have near enough parking for Dahlman flats. And so they leased 46 spaces from the city. So I don't know if everybody who lives in our neighborhood will not have to lease their own space from the city, because we don't have enough parking already. The 250 units, the one- and two-bedrooms, I think in minimum of 400 cars. And so even if you counted every on-street parking places there's, the 188 off-street parking ones won't begin to come up to what is needed. So we would just really love them. They've done a lot of hard work. It's a very beautiful design. We like that. We just need it to be scaled back significantly. I went and kind of looked around and saw what the City of Omaha has on their website for TIS, Program Specifics. And, you know, you all know this, but fostering the environment for a strong Omaha economy through the really revitalization of Omaha communities, utilizing TIF in public private structures within blighted areas. I don't know who in my neighborhood would consider it blighted. I mean, we like living there. We don't live there because it's a blighted area. And substandard CRA is characterized by underutilized, economically disenfranchised, and disadvantaged, and underdeveloped to enhance the live, work, and play experiences of Omaha. And the tax, taxing said that it would be one of the requirements was that a lot of the property taxes were going on, and we need to up the base. I looked around my neighborhood. Pretty much everybody, there were two houses I found that the valuations went down. Pretty much everybody else had around $8,000. There were a couple at $3,000 to $4,000. Some had $29,000 valuation increase. One had $41,000 from last year. So the tax base in my neighborhood is not going down. That's one thing I wanted to talk about. And then another one was, you don't have a significant inventory of deteriorating or obsolete building stock. We don't have stagnation or decline in property values. We don't have high commercial or industrial vacancy, and we don't have concentration of employment. Well, I can't say that because I don't know that. I haven't knocked on everybody's door and said, are you employed or not? We've asked them if they're going to have any affordable housing, and that was a strong no each time we asked that. And so one of your recommendations is housing development is mixed-income housing should be, should meet market demand yet also address affordability. So I'm just not seeing where they're ticking a lot of the boxes on the City of Omaha's own requirements for TIF financing. And the planning board hasn't approved it yet. So I don't know if that's premature to come before you. And I'm not sure of, like, how many angels dance on the head of the pin for what happens before you approve the TIF plan as versus approving the TIF funds. That was kind of a little murky to me, but I don't know too much about these things. So again, we just asked for consideration, like, if any of you had 400 more cars put into your neighborhood, I, I think something was about street improvements on, no. I can't remember what it was, said that there's going to be improvements to the traffic flow. We don't have anything but two-lane streets in our area. We don't have any four lanes to, like, improve traffic flow or whatever to help with the traffic, because it's just going to be not a good thing. So we would just request that you maybe lay it over until you hear from the planning board, until maybe we can sit down with Bluestone and just discuss what would, I mean, the investors have to have the return on investment. I get that part. But is there some middle ground that we can land on that at least it wouldn't be a total loss for our neighborhood? Because right now, again, it's the middle of the day, and not everybody can take off work. But a lot of people feel like there goes our neighborhood. We live there for a reason. And we would very much like to enjoy our neighborhood. You know, construction, I know, is a finite thing. It would only go on for a couple of years. But still, we would like to be able to enjoy our neighborhood when we're, they're done with the construction. So we're just asking again for you to consider what is being requested, what your own City of Omaha's rules and regs state, and come to, not a happy compromise, at least some kind of a compromise instead of an all or none, which we are getting none, and the developers are getting all. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Any other opponents today? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Mr. Begley, you're recognized.
Thanks, Mr. President. Ryan, can you come down, please? I had a question regarding, I got a few questions, but the first one is regarding traffic studies and what your research and look into this development, please state for what Public Works has done and what you found regarding traffic studies.
Yep. Ryan Haas with Public Works. So the project team originally approached us. It was just happenstance. It was around the same time we were approached by the representatives from OPS for the school site. So we responded to both project teams in saying both of these projects would require traffic studies. So rather than have two separate independent traffic studies, let's get one single study that accounts for the traffic from both projects. So that was something that was done. Obviously, the OPS project proceeded on a faster timeline. So they incorporated the outcome and recommendations of the, of the traffic studies specifically relating to the school. So the changes to the signage and striping for the pedestrian crossings for the school kids, and the changes to the one-way traffic flow around the school during pickup and drop-off times, those were recommendations of the traffic study. So those are out there in the, already in the field now because OPS proceeded several years ago. The traffic study also looked at capacity issues. Are there, is there a need for additional lanes, traffic signals, things like that? And, and the recommendation was that there are no additional lanes or capacity-related improvements required of either project, either the school or the, the apartment project.
Okay. And I know my, my new colleague and friend, Councilman Hug, got a constituent to reach out to him, and he's already been eager to dive in and learn and understand. So that was something, both of us kind of got contact by constituents on that. So I'm kind of covering a question for the both of us in that respect. Okay, I had a question for Mr. Jobin then. Thanks, Ryan.
Mr. Begley.
Good afternoon, Larry.
Good afternoon.
Ms. Kokowski had mentioned blighted and substandard areas. Can you kind of touch on that a little bit?
Well, what I was going to say in any rebuttal that I had is that this area has already been designated blighted and substandard. In fact, this area has been designated extremely blighted and substandard. The unfortunate part of that definition is it's constitutional. So we can't do anything to change when you have tax increment financing to change that terminology because it's built into our constitution. I mean, it would probably go over better with neighborhoods if it was a community redevelopment area or something to that effect. But, but the blighted and substandard designation, which is statutory and has to meet certain statutory requirements under the Nebraska Community Development Law, it's already been found to meet those requirements. There's a subpart A and B. It's already met those. In fact, it went further once the extremely blighted designation came out from a statutory perspective. It actually met those. It actually met those requirements as well. And so that's not what's being decided here today. That decision has already been made by the council. It's already designated as an extremely blighted area, and all that really means is that tax increment financing is then available, which is an incentive for developers to come in and invest in these areas, which Bluestone's looking to invest $45 million in this particular area. Why? To improve it, to redevelop it. We think it's an asset, and it's a positive thing to have properties designated blighted and substandard, or in this case, extremely blighted and substandard, because it actually encourages investment in these areas by allowing tax increment financing to be used to offset what they call tax increment financing eligible costs, or TIFF eligible costs, which include acquisition, demolition, site preparation, public improvements, certain engineering costs. I mean, those things are all statutory, and that policy's been consistently used and applied by this council ever since I started doing my first TIFF deal in 1999. So, I mean, this is all part of the tax increment financing program, and it's designed to encourage investment in these areas that are determined to be blighted and substandard, which this is.
Thanks for that explanation and clarification. It also was brought up on the, on the parking issues in the area. And also, you had mentioned, I guess, two parts. The BOSS Apartments and Row Houses, which actually is right across the street from my house. And I guess you can speak for Deborah and Christian, if that's all right.
Yeah, sure.
I know this project, as I had met with them and talked, that meeting in June they had, I was out of town that week, so I wasn't able to make it, but I did hear from and talk to people that had attended it, and this project goes back predating my time on the council. Is that correct, even during COVID?
I believe this first started when Deborah and Christian came into my office was probably a little over seven years ago, so it's been in the making for quite some time.
Okay. In the aesthetics, I know this was big, and the BOSS across from my house, it's not, it's, I guess, in meeting with Deborah and, and Christian, they want to be at least sensitive to the neighborhoods, not to just drop a big square box in, in the middle of a neighborhood, but it's sensitive to the historical nature of Dolman, right next to Little Italy. So that was, was that taken into account when, when they made this design going back as far as you mentioned?
Absolutely. And in fact, one of the things that we'll talk about tomorrow is the architectural style. I mean, there's pitched roofs. It's designed to fit in to the fabric of the adjacent neighborhood. There's articulation with respect to the buildings. There's, the buildings are broken up. I don't know if you can flip this on here. But you, you can see that the, the buildings are broken up. They're not just one, you know, large connected building like a traditional three-story apartment complex would look like. It's, it's actually designed to be these different row houses and apartments, again, with, you know, building materials that meet the urban design code, so there's, you know, brick and stucco and, and glass and wood-looking type materials that you saw in the elevations, which I can share with you again. But also, I just wanted to point out with respect to the, the parking, the parking has been discussed quite heavily in the various meetings with the neighborhood, but what I would say about this is that there are 250 stalls that are required. We're providing 264 stalls. 186 of those stalls are onsite, so they're internal to the site. 78 of the stalls, only 78, are counted on the adjacent right-of-way. And what I would point out is, you notice that this development's spread over three different blocks, city blocks, and so when you talk about 78 parking stalls, you're talking about parking stalls all the way around on all these streets that, that surround essentially almost three blocks of, of the city. So I don't know that, and with the NCE plan saying that it's actually encouraged and they're to be utilized, it seems to me that, that that is not too much of a burden on the public street system with respect to the number of parking stalls that they're having off-site. And that was discussed with planning quite heavily, and also the neighborhood when we had the various neighborhood meetings.
And I know, I, when I got up to speed on this, when I got on the council, I, I learned about the meetings that happened prior to my sitting in this seat, and when COVID slowed them down and kind of put things to a halt, the legwork was already laid that, in my research, I found out, and then once it started going forward again, there certainly was outreach to the neighborhood. Now, of course, you're not, you're not gonna get unanimous, everybody's in unison on anything. I don't care if it's a project or a vote or whatever, but I, I do feel comfortable, and as I look back and see my cousin Kim sitting back there and listening to, to her heartfelt words here today, and, and understanding that her perspective of that area that she calls home now, that's not Webster Street where we grew up, I'm comfortable supporting this because I, I know, I've had meetings with Deborah and Christian, I've talked to neighbors, and I've looked at even the past researches I've done, that I know when they did the BOSS across the street from my house, they are cognizant of the neighbors and respectful, and I, I don't think this, certainly you can say this wasn't something that was just rushed and plowed forward. They spent a lot of time respecting what the history and I guess the architectural structure of that neighborhood is down there on Pine Street, and we talked about the traffic studies that were done for Pine Elementary and even to the north of that where All Saint School is. So in respect to that, I will make a motion to support this today, and I appreciate everybody being patient on this. This thing's been going on a long time, and I'm looking forward to this moving forward today. Thanks, Mr. President.
There's a motion and a second to approve. Ms. Melton, you're recognized.
Oh, thank you. Mr. Seaton, could you come up?
Afternoon, Don Seaton, City Planning.
Mr. Seaton, it was mentioned that this hasn't been through Planning Board in my notes, which obviously can't come to the City Council until Planning Board, it goes through Planning Board. I have in my notes that it was August 2nd of this year. Is that correct?
That is correct, yes. It has been approved by the planning board.
And it was approved by the Planning Board. I think I saw in here, because we, it can't come to us.
It cannot, no.
Okay. And then, when you're looking at this for the number of parking spaces, because I'm very sensitive to the parking issues, not just on this project but on others, and I think that there were some good points here and some definite concerns from the neighbors when you see parking, obviously, this doesn't have anything to do with you or your department, but when you see the number of people parking in no parking zones, that would lend one to believe that there's parking issues today, and if there's parking issues today, there may be more with this bill. Now, the one thing about this, though, unlike kind of the last project that I was very concerned about the parking, I think it is the three blocks that it, it spans. Is that something that, that is looked at by the Planning Board when they're talking about the parking? Or do they just look at the number and say, "Well, as long as it's under the number, then we don't care"?
It's looked at by the Planning Board, and it's examined by my cohorts in the City Planning Department. And when it comes to relying on zoning requirements and numerical counts as far as, you know, building density or number of parking spaces, that's all spelled out in our zoning ordinance, and I look to those folks for that. The financial structure of the deal is what the TIFF Committee looks at, and you, of course, look at both land use and the financial structure. Planning Board looks primarily at the physical nature of the project. It is inappropriate land use and what's the parking like. In this case, the number of parking stalls does comply with the city's zoning ordinance.
Okay. I think those are all the questions I had for you. Maybe, Mr. Jobin, you could answer.
Yes, thank you.
And, Mr. Jobin, when your, when your clients are looking to build something, I would assume, and this is something that was kind of discussed in prior projects, if there's no parking, people may not want to move into the, these units.
Well, that's correct. I mean, what they're proposing to do here is redevelop this site and invest $45 million in this site, and if they can't get it leased or rented, that's not a good thing for them. So I think, based upon their tenant mix and the people that are their kind of target tenants, if you will, they believe that, you know, between the one- and two-bedroom units that they are calling for here, that the parking will not be an issue based upon the number of stalls that are onsite versus the number of stalls that are on-street. So yes, I think they've analyzed that, and they're comfortable that, that they're going to be able to supply their tenants with adequate parking.
And this isn't their first project in the City of Omaha.
This is not their first project, that's for sure.
So I'm, I'm certain when they're taking, they're gonna take that into consideration. Otherwise, if they don't have, you know, at least the majority of, of the, of the units rented at any given time, if people don't want to rent those units because of the parking, they're actually gonna lose money. So I guess I'm relying a little bit on the market and their experience to determine whether or not the parking is adequate for the number of units they have.
And there's alternative modes of transportation. They have bicycle lockers that they're calling for inside the apartment, so I mean, there's, you're not far, I don't believe, from a bus route on, on 13th Street, I believe. So there's lots of other modes of transportation, and I think that's what the city is looking at when they develop this whole NCE overlay district, is, is that there are a lot of people that are taking alternative modes of transportation, and so I think that is also taken into account when you look at these parking counts and parking requirements.
Okay. I, I think that, I think that's all I had. Just wanted to make those clarifications.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harding.
Thank you, Mr. President. Larry, maybe I'll have you stand there. Thank you for going through the, what's in the state constitution as it relates to redevelopment law, because that's, I think that's an important point here, is that, and, and I'm, I'm sure if we could unwind the clock, we probably would have picked a better term than blighted and substandard, but we can't do that. But for the purposes of, of what TIFF is, is to be used for, that's the, the definition that is in a redevelopment law. And I, I wanted to make sure that it was, it was clear, I, I heard a couple people, I think it was, and Ms. Kokowski, I think, brought this up too, about why are we voting on this now when it hasn't been through Planning Board? And Ms. Melton actually just confirmed that the redevelopment plan has gone through Planning Board. What's on the Planning Board tomorrow, that you referred to, I think, is the preliminary and final plat, and then there's another item that has to deal with the expansion of the NCE, and then the parking overlay.
And, well, and yes, and then also, the last thing is the approval of the conditional use permit. Yeah, I did not mention that because the redevelopment plan had been to Planning Board, I guess I should have mentioned that, so I hope I didn't confuse anybody. Yes, and then what the Planning Board looks at is compatibility with the city's master plan, and so when they make the recommendation to this council, they've made the determination that this proposed redevelopment plan is consistent with the master plan. So that's already been recommended for approval to this council. The items that I suggested that are on tomorrow really relate solely to the land use, the platting, the zoning, and those matters that you will be hearing, you know, down the road.
Well, and in addition to that, too, we will also see the redevelopment agreement to us as well, too.
Correct.
So when you were making the references about coming to us in the future related to this project, it is for those items associated with, but not this agenda item that will be on Planning Board tomorrow, as well as redevelopment agreement, which finalizes the, the TIFF with, with the City of Omaha. I also wanted, just one other thing, when, when this goes through the process, so that people do understand the, the amount of scrutiny and vetting that goes, goes into these projects, it goes through the, really, the applications made to the Planning Department. The Planning Department then moves it on to the TIFF Committee, once it's approved by the TIFF Committee, and, and you brought up, and I think it's a good point to bring up, that there are specific tax increment financing or TIFF eligible costs that, that you can use TIFF funds for, and there are certain items that you can't use it for, like personal property and, and things of that nature.
New vertical construction you can't use it for.
Right. So it's. So it goes through the TIFF Committee, then to the Planning Board, and then to City Council. So I just wanted to make sure that all were clear, that we're, we are doing this in, in the proper order, number one, and then, two, the amount of scrutiny that it gets, that it goes through to get to this point.
I would agree with that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hug.
Don't sit down. Can you go over the map for me, please? I actually need to be orientated. I tried to look at what is pulled up on the screen up there, but I'm old. So the pro, to, to the, to the right of the map, what street are those on?
I am going to get my own little cheat sheet out. How about that? So up here is William Street.
And north is top of the map?
North is top.
Okay.
East, that way. Well, here, I'm just drawing it, right?
And the street, and the street to the, and the street to the right is Eighth Street?
That is Eighth Street, correct. Eighth. This is Williams. This is Worthington. And this is Pine. And over here is 10th. And down here a little ways is Hickory.
But there's nothing on Hickory Street.
No, uh-uh. No, there's actually a whole nother row of, of development, and then Hickory.
And that square between Worthington and Pine, that's the school?
That is the elementary school. This is Pine.
So if I remember correctly, the property on Williams and Worthington and A Street is former Grace Bible College property.
That's correct. It was purchased from Grace, the various lots. There's two lots that I think were mentioned down here in this area by Don that have two houses. One may be relocated, one will probably be demolished, but other than that, everything else has been the Bible College property. And this might help you out also.
And, and this question is probably way out of the scope of this, of what it needs to be, but what about sewer improvement on A Street? Are you gonna be using the existing sewer, tying into the existing sewer? Do we know how old that is?
I'll turn that one over to the engineers.
Good afternoon. Joe Zadina with Lampard Nielsen, 14710 West Dodge. Yeah, we've been coordinating with City Sewer Maintenance and Public Works. We've, we've TV'd all the lines. They were completed probably one week ago, and we distributed the televised information for the sewers to the sewer department. I think there's almost 2,000 linear feet of sewer. Eighth, 10th, Worthington, William, and Pine were all TV'd, and then all manholes were inspected, and that information provided to the city. So we've done, per their request, and we're making sure that our connections are suitable for the sewer system.
So how old is the sewer in Eighth Street?
I, I'd have to look. I would guess it could be up to 100 years old. I mean, some of these sewers are quite ancient. I'd have to look at the old sewer section sheets, so it's clay pipe.
So we don't know if it's concrete or steel?
We, yeah, we do. It's a variety of different materials as it's been constructed over the years or replaced over the years, but all that information has been provided to the, to the city, and the condition of every line has been graded. Any breaks have been noted. It's actually in pretty good condition. Most grades were between a one and a two, and it goes bad as five, like an immediate fix, and there's maybe only one or two of those along 10th Street.
And they're a sufficient diameter to withstand the additional residences?
Yeah, we actually are working with City Sewer Maintenance to minimize our taps of existing structures so that we don't have to get into some of the, the guts of maybe what has caused problems in the past. So we're, we're trying to minimize our connection points and connect as many as we can internally, so we're making as few connections to the city system as possible.
All right. That's all I had for you.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you. There's no further lights. Is there a motion? Oh, sorry, there was a motion and a second to approve. There are no further lights. Roll call.
Begley, Harding, Hug, Johnson.
Begley, Harding, Hug, Johnson, Melton, Rowe. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 13 is approved, seven to zero. Consent agenda. Any member of the city council may cause any item placed on the consent agenda to be removed. Items removed from the consent agenda shall be taken up by the city council immediately following the consent agenda in the order in which they were removed, unless otherwise provided by the city council rules of order.
The public hearings on agenda items 14 through 16 were held on September 26th. There are no further lights, is there a motion? There's a motion, a second to approve, roll call.
Begley, Harding, Hug, Johnson, Melton, Rowe. Mr. President.
Yes.
Items 14, 16 are approved, seven to zero.
There's been a request to remove number 29 from the consent agenda, so number 29 is removed. So, first we'll start with the public hearings on agenda items 17 through 28 and 30 through 39. If you wish to address the city council regarding these items, please come to the microphone, indicate the agenda item number you wish to address, identify yourself by name and address, and who you represent, and if you are a proponent or an opponent. This is 17 through 28 and 30 through 39.
I'm Jeannie Beletz, owner of Maplewood Lane. I'm kinda nervous, too, I've never done this before. My brother died, and we are buying the business from his family and widow, and I want my daughter to be on my liquor license. I'm kind of emotional about this, 'cause my brother died.
Yeah, we're sorry for your loss.
So, I just wanted to have her on my liquor license.
Yep. And what number?
Every time I talk about it, I cry.
Yes, you're doing fine. It's number 17, right?
Yes.
Okay, understandable with the family business there.
She runs my business.
Yeah, great, thank you.
I'm retired, thank the Lord.
And just your address for the record, too?
3030 North 101.
Great.
Street.
Thank you, we appreciate you being here. Any other testifiers on these items?
I just get emotional.
I do not. Donnie, you wanna, are you addressing these items?
I was gonna let the lady finish. Are you finished, ma'am?
Yes, I am.
Okay, well, I'll wait till you get your seat.
Don't go far.
The Navy, we have to respect all ladies.
Just make sure you're addressing this.
Are we on number 45 and 46?
No, we're not.
Okay, sorry.
Okay. Any other testifiers on these items?
Am I dead?
Yes, you're fine.
Thank you.
Well, uh.
I mean, I've heard you again, but I think I'm against 30, 31, 32, 33, and 34. Is that correct?
Ron, those, yep?
Okay. The main reason I'm against them, and I think you need a little discussion, is that are we not already following all the major laws that we ought to be following? If so, then why do we need to do all this? I remember back in the day when I was an employee, we had lots of human relations things, but we all had to be following the federal and state laws. And nine times out of 10, they didn't write anything additional into those laws. They weren't allowed to. I primarily like to have that discussion as to why we need all this by a human relations director now in, in the public venue. That should be an employer's privacy right, I guess, but the city's not private. I primarily want to ask about number 34, which kind of scares the hell out of me, that a human resource policy through the city can develop what is probably their own procedure for a civilian discipline and termination. You don't say a civilian employee. As far as I know, city employees are not military, fire, or police. So, what exactly does that mean? Is that talking about me up here when I'm out of order, or walking on the street, or on city property in the civic center, which we more or less pay for? So, please explain that just a little bit. What do you mean by a procedure for civilian discipline and termination? And how these law, these regulations of the city, I guess, are maybe in conflict with federal and state laws?
Any other testifiers on these items? Please come down.
Good afternoon, Bree Robbins, Labor Relations Director. I'm here to answer any questions on policy, agenda items 30 through 34. They are policies specific to employees for the city of Omaha. They are just revisions to policies to align with current practice and procedures. They are all in compliance with state and federal law, also collective bargaining agreements. They have been approved by the personnel board. And really, they've just been updated, again, just to align with what we are doing with our current employees, so that everybody has those policies in place, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And thanks for the overview you provided this morning, too.
Thank you.
Any other testifiers on these items? Seeing none, the public hearings are closed, I think Ms. Melton has stepped out, so we'll recognize Ms. Johnson, your light's on.
Mr. President, I had asked city council to remove items of appointments from the agenda on a regular, and I was assured that that would be the case.
A council member can request to remove items from the consent agenda. That was not made this morning, in my judgment, but I did remove number 29 when we talked about it.
A few weeks ago, I made a request to city council staff that when there's an appointment of a committee or commission, that we would let remove those from the agenda.
Okay, we can discuss further, but those items are currently on the table and had their public hearing.
So, I won't be voting in affirmative for those?
Okay. Madam Clerk, are we able to call a separate vote on those at this point for Ms. Johnson?
You can pull them off the consent. We don't have a motion in a second, do we?
Okay, they were not, they have not been pulled off consent, and they have, they have had its public hearing. Or maybe that's, maybe that's a question for me, Mr. Cozy, procedurally.
I'll defer to law.
Matt Cozy, Law Department, this is the public hearing on 17 through?
17 through 28 and 30 through 39.
Correct, and I don't think there's any requirement that if they want to be pulled off for a separate vote, that has to be asked necessarily beforehand, but so they can be pulled off so long as there hasn't been, and I didn't, I don't recall there's been one, a motion and a second to approve those items.
Okay.
But I'll defer to the clerk if there's been a motion and a second.
There has not been.
There has not.
Okay, so that could still occur. Is your, is your ruling right?
Yes.
Yeah, Mr. Cozy.
Matt Cozy, Law Department, yes, there can be a separate vote on those matters if someone wishes to pull them off, since there hasn't been a previous motion and a second.
Okay. If that's Ms. Johnson's wish, we can, we can do that with, are you talking about items 38 and 39?
Right.
Okay. All right.
Public hearing's over.
Yes. All right, you okay?
Yes. Do we have Chelsea Olmstead here? Do we have anyone from the Landmark here to speak to this item? Anyone from HR? I'm aware that HR doesn't have anything to do with that. I thought I would give them the option. I do have their right to do so. Thank you very much.
Yeah.
I've spoke on, on a number of occasion about the, the need for diversity, equity, and inclusion on these boards. And I've asked on a number of occasions that these individuals come before us to speak, so that I have the opportunity to ask questions, to assure that that person has that skillset or is capable, or have had any life experiences surrounding those issues. Unfortunately, no one's here on this matter, and therefore, I'm not able to do due diligence. So, I will have to vote no on this item.
Does that conclude your remarks, for now?
Should I move on to number 39?
Sure, floor is yours.
Number 39, for the sake of saving time, my response is the same there as it was on 38, and my vote, my vote would be no.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Hug, you're recognized.
Oh, I'm sorry, never mind.
Okay.
I apologize.
There are no further lights. Procedurally, it's been requested that 38 and 39 have separate votes, so I would take a motion on the other items first.
Motion to approve items 17 through 28 and 30 through 37.
Motion a second on items 17 through 28 and 30 through 37, roll call.
Begley, Harding, Hug, Johnson.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Rowe. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero.
Separate motions on number 38 and 39.
Move second.
There's a motion and a second, roll call.
Begley, Harding, Hug, Johnson, Melton, Rowe. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 38 is approved, six to one.
And 39.
Second.
Motion a second on 39, roll call.
Begley, Harding, Hug, Johnson, Melton, Rowe. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 39 is approved, six to one. Item 29, a resolution to approve the agreement in the amount of $68,993.17 from Charisoff Technology Corporation for LinkedIn for employment recruitment.
Public hearing on vote on number 29 is today, proponents, please.
Deb Sanders, City Human Resources. There was a request this morning to speak a little bit about the pilot plan that we did, the pilot program that we did. So, in 2022, we looked to LinkedIn to get a corporate account, which allows us to do direct contact to individuals via the LinkedIn website. We measured a number of different things, job awareness, or what they call job impressions, which are notifications to individuals that a city job was posted. So, if you're on LinkedIn and you have an engineering degree, or you're interested in engineering, then we could reach out directly to you, and those notifications would be sent to you via email through the LinkedIn product. Also, we looked at job views, so individuals that are actually reviewing our postings that are up on the LinkedIn site are connected to the LinkedIn site. And we also looked at job applications, so who actually clicked on our posting and our LinkedIn said, "Apply here." So, what we saw during the pilot, we increased job impressions, or those notifications, by 47%. We increased jobs views by 40%, and then actual job applications by about 34%. And that was just in our pilot program, that was a six-month program. So, we engaged in, we piggybacked on to the state contract, so that way we could get the same pricing, and we've had that contract with LinkedIn for a year. And in the last year from, which was 2022, 2023, which is our first year, after the pilot, we've seen job impressions continue to increase by another 47%. So, from about 42,000 to 62,000, actual impressions, which again is the, the ability to reach out directly to individuals to say, "Hey, the city's got a job that you might be interested in." Our job views increased by about 51%. We've got additional views from last year to this year, over 1,600 views, and of those 1,600, 1,400 are what they call unique visitors. So, it's not the same people looking over and over again, it's brand-new people looking at our sites. In the last year, we gained 2,220 new followers on the city LinkedIn site, which is basically them going to LinkedIn and say, "Hey, if the city posted a job, I want to know about it, so please notify me." We've also had 355 applications where LinkedIn was listed as the job source, or how did you find out about this job? And then we've hired 15 people who list LinkedIn as their job search source since last year. And I'm here to answer any other questions, if you have them.
Okay, thank you. Any other proponents? Seeing none, any opponents to number 29? Public hearing's closed, Ms. Johnson, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. Deb, I just have a few questions. Thank you for providing all that information. Just have one question, how many employees have been hired and they were connected by using LinkedIn?
Fifteen.
Fifteen, thank you.
Yes.
Okay. No further lights?
Move to the first.
Motion a second to approve, roll call.
Begley, Harding, Hug, Johnson, Melton, Rowe. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 29 is approved, seven to zero. Item 40, an ordinance to acquire private property for the Giles Road Siphon Replacement, South 110th and Harry Anderson Avenue Project.
Public hearing on number 40 is today, proponents, please. Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearings closed.
One public hearing can be held for items 41 and 42, ordinances to approve streetscape maintenance agreements with New West Farm Holdings LLC and the Hartwood Preserve Master Property Owners Association, and South Farm LLC and the Hartwood Preserve Master Property Owners Association.
Public hearing on items 41 and 42 are today, proponents, please. Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearings closed.
One public hearing can be held for items 43 through 48, ordinances levying a special tax and assessment for Benson Business Improvement District, Blackstone Business Improvement District, Dundee Business Improvement District, Elkhorn Business Improvement District, North 24th Street Business Improvement District, and South Omaha Business Improvement District.
Public hearings on items 43 through 48 are today, proponents, please. Are you addressing the BIDs, Donnie?
Yes, Mr. President, I realize you was in college while I was doing all this work, but I'll try to explain and bring you up to date.
Okay, you gotta be on topic.
Yes, sir. Donnie Howard Johnson, the Johnson &amp; Coniston Foundation, and North Omaha Concerned Citizen Foundation. Now, as I was trying to explain to you, Mr. President, about 45 and 46, when Mayor Dodd, when he was mayor at the time, gave me permission to do a toll bridge study, we did the study on Dodge as well.
This is about BIDs, Donnie? Business improvement.
What about, we're trying to figure out all these new customers, citizens going up Dodge Street. Who's gonna pay for that bridge?
This is not Dodge Street.
Oh, 40, Benson, Dundee is not part of Dodge?
No, it's not.
You're right, my teacher lived in there, I forgot the address.
Any other opponents to these items? I'm sorry, proponents or opponents?
Proponents.
Proponents, yes, please, continue.
Luis Jimenez, 2709 Dewey Avenue. I, I worked in the, in a business improvement district. I've been involved in the community in a business improvement district, and what I understand is they're all different. Not terribly different, but they operate differently, especially how they assess the, especially how they do the assessment. North 24th Street, they have a low, so I'm particularly supporting 47, 'cause they have a, they've kept a, a low assessment to the various properties. So, that's my support. I do want to apologize to you, Mr. President, for the ageism that was thrown at you. One thing that I've found out, being involved in the community, is there's a lot of ageism, and it's terrible, and it has to stop. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other proponents on these items? Any opponents?
Larry Store, 5015 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha 68132. I didn't have time to do a lot of homework on this. I live in Dundee, I'm not real sure that my lot is one of these, but I suspect it is. It would be nice if you'd have something on the screen about what lots you're talking about, 'cause I would like to vote for or against, you know, a special assessment. And it says it is a public hearing, and I guess I don't get to vote on that, though. But it would be nice to see it displayed. Not all of us can go online and get all of the information we need from your documents. So, if you have it available, would you please display it on there for people to... So, uh, if you have it available, would you please display it on there for people that might be watching at home or want to play it back later? And by the way, when you play it back later, the YouTube version is even harder to hear than in the chambers here today.
Any other opponents to number forty-three through forty-eight? Nope, you've already spoken, Donnie, on these items.
Six is Dodge Street, though, right?
Nope. Public hearings are closed. Next, uh, Ms. Johnson, you're recognized.
Um, these, uh, remarks is for all, uh, forty-three through forty-seven. Do you, I looked at the attachments or the supporting information for each one of these items, and I did not see an expense report, um, attached. Do we have an expense report for each of these business districts?
I think Mr. Endemash can come down for that question.
Bernard Endemash, Deputy City Attorney. We certainly can get you a list of what each of the business improvement districts spent. However, the item before you is only for those people who have failed to pay their, the bill that they sent, based on their percentage of the assessment, and based on the ordinance that was approved by the council that established each of the respective business improvement districts. Those people are now being assessed for their portion of the amount spent by the BID. If, if you'd like me to, I mean, I can certainly, uh, talk to the people in the Parks Department who oversee and say, "How much did each BID spend in two thousand and twenty-three or two thousand and twenty-two?" Obviously, we can provide you that information. But that's not what the purpose of this particular document is. These particular documents are for those people who have not paid their portion to assess, uh, what they didn't pay that was owed for, uh, two thousand and twenty-two. But I can get those to you if you'd like me to.
Um, question, um, is it a requirement for each business improvement district to provide an expense report for charges that they are expecting, um, the city to pay for?
No. So what's, once the ordinances that are approved by the council that create the business improvement district, they're authorized to expend the amount that this council has approved for them, and, and no more. The, what, the process that works for all the business improvement districts other than downtown is those bills are submitted to the city with a note from the board saying, "We've approved payment of these bills," and then those are paid during the, are billed during the calendar year. At the end of the calendar year, the Parks Department calcu- determines the total amount spent by the BID. Usually, it's less than what's authorized. And then they, they determine what each person is owed based on the methodology established in the ordinance that this council approves. So there is no requirement in the business improvement district ordinances that they do a report. But obviously, we're, we're aware of at least that, the work that they've done, where the money comes from the city, and that's being assessed back against the people. All the business improvement districts have the ability to do work above and beyond, um, that, that's in the, that is going to be assessed against, and if they want to do that, then their own, they're their own public body, and people can communicate with the members of the BID and say, "What other projects have you done that were funded by grants or other things?" Because I know many of them do do that.
Well, my concern is that, uh, many of the business owners, um, will, I, we're assessing them a set amount based upon a amount that was submitted. I'm sure that they're going to ask what and how did we, as a city, um, come about with that number. So you mentioned bills. They submit bills to the city, correct?
So the business improvement districts submit bills to the city, the city pays them. Bills went out in March of two thousand and twenty-three. I will tell you that of the twelve hundred bills that got out, I think I had four phone calls, because I'm the person who gets the phone calls. Most of the businesses and people that are involved in the BIDs are familiar with the process. Um, every year, I get a half dozen calls typically, people asking questions. I explain it. I frequently will provide a copy of the business improvement district ordinance. Usually, those are people who are new to that area. And, and, um, so it's, I mean...
So what do you do in the case if someone asks what was used for the amount that they're being assessed?
If they ask, "What did the BID spend in the previous year?", I will get that information and provide it to them. And I'll be honest with you, in the last fifteen years of BIDs, that's happened once.
So would I be correct in saying that, um, when this assessment was submitted to each business owner in each prospective business improvement district, they didn't get anything to support the charge that they were being assessed?
With the bill, they would have typically received a letter that says here, "This is your portion of your bill, and this is the total amount spent by the BID." There is not a breakdown in that communication that says what it was for or, or anything else. That's correct.
Thank you. Thank you. Ms. Melton, you're recognized.
Thanks. Don't go far. Hold on, just stay right there. And I, I'm just going to go through instead of asking you questions, just tell me if I'm incorrect. Most of the businesses that get assessed, they have the opportunity, there's a BID board. The board's appointed, so the BID board is made up of these businesses that are being assessed, and so everybody being assessed has the opportunity to attend the BID meetings, and, oh, most of the businesses are actively involved because they actually, I know I was part of Elkhorn when they were starting their BID, going to all those meetings. And so the Elkhorn Business Improvement District is made up of businesses that they all gathered and met and asked to form the BID. And I, I think that would probably be why you don't get too many calls, because a lot of these businesses are actively involved. And then I just wanted to let Mr. Store know, you're not part of the Dundee Improvement District, and in the event you are, you paid the bill, because you're not on, all we're doing today is assessing people who didn't pay their bill, and we already voted on this, these assessments, at our last Board of Equalization meeting a couple weeks ago. So the city council, sitting as the Board of EAK, already did vote on these assessments. So, um, am I correct on a lot of the, a lot of the things on expenses and things like that? These businesses can go to the BID meetings and talk about what expenses they want to see, and they can get actively involved.
Certainly, those people that are assessed, and it's not always businesses, so that's why I'm a little careful and, and on agreeing with that, are able to attend the, the meetings of the BID. Those are, I encourage those meetings to be public. I believe that they all are. Uh, not every business or person is super involved. Some certainly are, some are, are less involved. But the reality is, there is an ability to do it, and the, the reason that we can specially assess on property is because people are ostensibly specially benefited by those improvements that are authorized by the business improvement district. But the, the, I mean, we, we basically, the reason we assess this is because the city loans the money to the business improvement districts, um, and then asks, after the year is over, that we be paid back based on the methodology that was approved by this council. And keep in mind that when each, each business improvement district was approved, every single property owner within that district received a notification, uh, of the public hearing before this particular council, uh, and had an opportunity to appear. And that will continue, that continues every time we create a business improvement district, and we, um, have at least one that's going to have to be reauthorized by the end of the year, and they will also get, every single assessable unit will get a notification in that particular case.
All right. And, and again, just to clarify, these are just people who, between the Board of EAK, I think there were more people on the list that we approved as the Board of Equalization. Anybody who hasn't paid, then that's what this assessment is? It's just the people that haven't paid?
Correct. And I would anticipate you'll get amendments to these ordinances, because there'll be additional people that will pay once they're aware of, they're made aware that they, there's an amount that's outstanding, and we almost always have amendments that are going to be introduced at third reading to remove additional people that have paid their, the amount that they're obligated to pay.
Between now and in two weeks, when we have the vote on this, you'll amend it and remove the people that pay.
I would be shocked if, if in several instances, there weren't amendments. I don't know that there'll be one in every, because there's a couple of these where there's only one, two, or three people that haven't paid. But I, I fully expect you'll see amendments, uh, because other people will have paid.
All right. Thank you very much. Thanks, Bernard.
Thank you. No further lights. Next item, please.
Item forty-nine, an ordinance to amend section twenty-three dash one seven seven of the Omaha Municipal Code to add the employment classification entitled Urban Forestry and Property Inspector. Personnel Board recommends approval.
Public hearing on number forty-nine is today. Proponents, please.
Deb Sander, Human Resources, here to answer any questions.
Thank you.
Chelsea Ship, Human Resources, also here to answer questions.
Thank you. Any other proponents?
Luis Jimenez, twenty-seven oh-nine Dewey Avenue. I support this. This is, uh, good development for, uh, the trees in the, um, the city. Uh, I'm curious what the scope of work is. I think that the, the price is right for their wages, uh, but, uh, I'm, I'm wondering if volunteer trees, if volunteer trees are going to be part of their inspection. And it's gonna, it's gonna be nice moving forward that there's not going to be a council member that's going to give the, um, the, um, human resource people a hard time when these items come forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other proponents? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Deb, if you want to just answer that question, the scope, the scope of this person's job?
Actually, I'll let Chelsea do that, because she did the entire job description. She knows it much better than I do.
Sure.
I will try to answer that question. Chelsea Ship, Human Resources. Um, this is actually an offshoot of an existing position, the Environmental Inspector. Um, so these people do, um, these employees, I should say, they are in charge of looking out for hazardous, um, tree conditions, so, um, trees that might be interfering with the right-of-way, they might be downed by, um, storms. Uh, we also have forestry and arborist, um, positions that are more in line with, um, taking care of the trees. This is more looking out for trees that might be, uh, in need of pruning or taking down.
Thank you. No further lights. Next item?
Item fifty, an ordinance to accept and authorize disbursement from the Highway Safety Program Grant in the amount of ninety-five thousand dollars for the project nightlife expansion project.
Public hearing on number fifty is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Item fifty-one, an ordinance to approve the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-three Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant Program application in the amount of four hundred and fifty-four thousand, six hundred and thirty-eight dollars.
Public hearing on number fifty-one is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Item fifty-two, an ordinance to authorize the issuance of various purpose bonds, series two thousand and twenty-three, in an amount not to exceed one hundred and thirty million dollars.
Public hearing on number fifty-two is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed. I might just ask the Finance Department one question on this, uh, for the record, which I think I know the answer, but for those that are watching, one hundred and thirty million dollars is a large amount, right? Uh, this proposes to sell one hundred and thirty million dollars in general obligation bonds, but I believe it's accurate to say that this sells the bonds that have already been approved by the voters for our normal program of work in our capital improvement plan, spanning from streets to parks to public safety projects. Is that an accurate characterization of this item?
So Don drives this City Finance Department. That is correct.
Okay. Great. Thank you. No further lights. Next item?
Item fifty-three, Kelly Supply Company appeals the rejection of their bid from September thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, for City of Omaha belts, seals, and bearings for water resource recovery facilities.
Number fifty-three is today. This is not a public hearing, but there's, this is a, um, bid rejection appeal. If the person who has appealed the rejection is here and wants to speak, they're welcome to come to the podium.
Hello, I'm Vicky Sparre-Yuan, forty-five forty-three Walnut Street, and I'm here for Kelly Supply Company at forty-two forty-two South Ninetieth Street. And as you know, everybody's got a letter. Um, our bid bond was shy. It's supposed to be five percent of the number. We weren't quite there, which was an error on our end. We have the ability to appeal. We're family-owned, hundred-and-twenty-year-old family-owned company, fifth generation, and I'm here just to appeal to get back in the, into the bid.
Okay. Thank you.
That's it.
All right. And a city representative who may want to speak.
This is Tyler Heepika, Assistant City Attorney for the City of Omaha. Um, this particular bid and almost all of our bids that go, or I should say, all, there's a bid bond attached to them. Um, in the event we award the contract to somebody, uh, and they don't perform on it from the outset, we're able to use that as liquidated damages. And most of the time, I'd say ninety-eight percent of the time, that bid bond is five percent. In this particular case, that bid bond was five percent. Per the city ordinances and per our requirements that, um, were sent out to all of the, uh, the public when they were notified of this bid opportunity, um, it was made clear to them that there is, this is five percent, and we don't have discretion to waive that four, five percent. This particular bid came in at about four point two percent. Um, I, it's, it's an unfortunate error, um, but the, the, the discretion to change this is just simply lacking. Uh, we would ask that you deny the appeal for that reason.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Melton, you're recognized.
Thank you. Can I just ask you, have any bids been awarded?
Yes. Bids have not been awarded. At this time, um, I had a conversation with the Public Works Department yesterday. Those bids likely will not be awarded because they need to add a specification to this particular bid, um, to indicate that they need these parts within twenty-four hours when they ask for them. Um, that is crucial to keeping the water treatment facilities open. My understanding is, it is highly likely that all bids will be rejected, and that will be added. I can't say that for sure to you and represent that for sure to you today, but that is likely what is going to happen. So have they been, uh, awarded? No. Will they be awarded this particular time? From my understanding, probably not. Will that essentially result in them getting another opportunity to submit the appropriate bid bond on their next bid? Yes, it will.
Okay. And then I just have one more question. I, I hope that's the case, because then it resolves all the issues. Uh, but current, but, and sometimes this is a concern, too, is are we rejecting, this wasn't the lowest bid? It might be the lowest and best, but this wasn't the lowest bid. Is that correct?
I can say, first, I would say that when we open these bids, uh, someone from the city attorney's office looks at the bid bond. If the bid bond is insufficient...
Oh, you don't look at it?
We don't even open it.
Oh, okay.
I can, and we're not supposed to open it. We're, we're supposed to just reject it and put it aside. I can tell you that this was not, in this particular instance, the lowest bid, but, um, we, we have access to that information, but we're supposed to just stick it aside and not even look at the bid.
Okay. So the good news is, it just may not matter.
Yes.
But by law, we don't, the city council doesn't have the discretion. It's contrary to ordinance to, um, to approve it, correct?
That is my under, that is my reading of the ordinances, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
And do you want to come back down just for a minute? So do you understand, um, what they're describing there?
I do understand.
That you were, uh, just one minute, that you were super close to the five percent, but not the five percent, and so by city, by city ordinance, we can't, um, you know, waive that requirement? But it's most likely all bids get rejected, and you'll be able to rebid on, on this item?
Understood. Yep. We were a bit confused. It was a little bit confusing. We feel it was a bit confusing on the layout, so, uh, we're a hundred and eighty-nine bucks was a bit confusing on the layout, so we're one hundred and eighty-nine bucks short, but it's short to contract. I get it. So, I thank everybody for the time, though, and the opportunity that we do have to appeal. And lastly, I hope you can help seventeen.
Yep, we did. Thank you. Thanks for coming down. Is there a motion? Motion to deny. Motion to deny in a second. Roll call.
Begley.
Aye.
Harding.
Yes.
Hug.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Rowe. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion is approved, seven to zero.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second. Roll call.
I'll read it real quick. Non-action items. Items fifty-four through sixty-four do not require a public hearing or city council consideration at this meeting, but will be placed on a future agenda for a public hearing under vote. The reason for non-action is noted after the item on the agenda, as well as the date the item is expected to appear on an agenda for consideration.
I just thought I'd mess with Kimberly, since it's her turn to run the meeting today. Roll call to adjourn.
Begley.
Aye.
Harding. Hug. Johnson.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Rowe. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion is approved, seven to zero. Meeting is adjourned at three forty-nine.
All right.